Okay, good evening, folks. I'm going to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Directors for the Marin Municipal Water District for Monday, November 27th. Terry, could we get a roll call?
Yes, good evening. Director Larry Russell.
Here.
Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
Vice President Ranjeev Kush.
Here.
And President Monte Schmidt.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have any comments on the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote?
Yes, Director Russell.
Aye.
Director Sampson.
Aye.
Director Smith.
Aye.
Vice President Kush.
Aye.
And President Schmidt.
Aye. Okay, isn't this part where we normally have comments on items not on the agenda?
Yeah.
It's not an... Is there any reason why we wouldn't just ask if there are any comments on items not on the agenda?
Oh, I'm... Please use your microphones when speaking.
Good point. So, okay, well, since it's not on the agenda, we can't ask about it, so we'll keep moving forward. All right. First up is a consent item, so are we adopting our consent item? So we'd have a motion to adopt the consent item?
That's correct, and then we'll see if there's any public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, are there any comments, public comments, on the consent item?
Just before that, Monte, just had a quick question for Jared. Jared, is the MOU, has that been ratified by the union?
Yes, so it's been ratified by the union, and I think it's currently being circulated for final signatures from the union representatives.
Okay.
But yes, it's effective currently.
And this item is to align healthcare payments with those that were negotiated as part of the contract.
Yep, that's correct, and this is kind of a regular annual item that the district has to do, so annually we have to adopt a resolution for CalPERS that tells them what we will pay for healthcare for employees.
Yeah, understood. Okay, thank you.
Okay, fantastic. Any other comments?
There are none.
There are none. Okay, can we get a roll call vote?
Yes, Director Russell.
Aye.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Director Smith.
Aye.
Vice President Kush.
Aye.
And President Schmidt.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to our regular, first and our only regular item, which is the strategic plan development.
Good evening, board members. I'm Sean Horn, Watershed Resources Manager. Let me bring a presentation for you. So tonight, we're going to give you an opportunity to help us develop the strategic plan goals for the watershed specifically, but we'll introduce this item and go over some of the process and where we are to date with this. So the purpose of this evening is really to discuss the watershed stewardship goal that we developed and the various objectives. In this discussion, we really want to get some assistance framing it, making sure that we're framing it correctly, how you see the organization moving forward over the next five years, and then evaluating these objectives to make sure that they capture important interests of the board and the community, and so we can talk through how we've worked on these goals to date and the objectives that we've developed, but that's really the questions that we have for you this evening. So I will be joined by a guest co-presenter here shortly, but really, we're walking through the vision, mission, and then goals and objectives and the values. We'll review briefly the mission and the vision that have been refined to date, and then we'll go on a deep dive into the watershed goals and objectives. Come back? Yeah. Yeah, that works well. So we'll come back to this, as Ben mentioned, and we'll start with the watershed goals and be very specific, so.
And Sean, before we jump into that, Ben, I just want to clarify, we haven't yet dived into Goals 1 and 2, so we have decided to start with Goal 3.
What's coming up? Thank you. The next one, at an upcoming meeting, we're going to hit two, which is Goal Number 1 and Goal Number 4 will be the next, and then we'll hit Goal 2 and then Goal 5, so a little out of order, but just done. Partly, this is, you know, a big one, let's have a special meeting for this. Those two, we think we can tuck in a regular meeting and just, we'll see how it goes, but the idea is to just get this going.
So we'll return to this at the end, but here's the schedule that we've outlined for going through each of the various goals, and we're starting tonight with the watershed goal. And so, a lot of words here, and I'll just kind of summarize this for you. When we were putting together the structure of how we were going to present these goals, we wanted to have kind of an introduction to it. So what's the goal for the watershed stewardship component? How did we want to kind of frame that for you all to think about and for us to, as a district, kind of guide our thinking? And we really wanted to summarize some of the key components that are going to be the objectives under this goal. Really thinking about our wildfire resiliency work, our restoration stewardship efforts on the watershed, how we maintain our facilities to make sure they're operational, and how we support education and recreation more broadly. And then the kind of final two sentences are really just acknowledging the stewardship being central to the district's operations and how we help connect the community to these watershed lands and provide them with an opportunity to participate in the restoration and stewardship of this place. So kind of an intro, framing it for the various objectives to come. So we developed these objectives through conversation and collaboration with the various workgroups on the watershed specifically and the other workgroups in the organization, really trying to be focused and targeted around what we're moving forward in the various departments. And really, when we worked through the watershed objectives, we identified creek restoration, Lagunitas Creek Restoration is a kind of central key component, also wildfire resiliency and the implementation of the BIFIP as a core item that the district's moving forward with, stewardship more broadly, how we connect with the community and involve them in maintaining our land and how we collect new information around the watershed, thinking about recreation, public access, what does that mean and how do we support it, and then how do we maintain our facilities in an operational manner and enhance those. So with the first one, we're going to go into the stream restoration or creek restoration. This is really kind of advancing what the district has been doing since the 90s, really aligning our work around our Lagunitas stewardship plan and acknowledging that we're part of making sure that this landscape continues to be resilient and able to adapt to climate-induced risks. So acknowledging that we're going to be active in restoration and continuing with our monitoring work in Lagunitas Creek to help steward the unique biological resources of this area. So under the creek objectives, I think we frame, the way we organized this was kind of an intro and then all these bullet points, which are kind of like the core elements that we're going to be advancing over the next five years. So we've presented to date the Lagunitas Creek Watershed Enhancement Plan that we've been developing with grant funding. We're really looking to advance that over the next five years with state parks and funding partners and the resource agencies that permit us to do this work, and really enhancing the critical habitat and geomorphic processes that are critical to sustaining threatened endangered species within the watershed. And you can think of kind of measurable outcomes of this as implementing, you know, 13 restoration sites over the next five years, having, you know, 250 log structures we're putting in the creek and kind of a measurable impact that we can have from a restoration standpoint. The second one is really about our life cycle monitoring for fisheries downstream of, in Lagunitas Creek, and our habitat enhancement effectiveness monitoring, so really aligning all of that work around our Lagunitas stewardship plan, acknowledging that we're working with the Lagunitas Technical Advisory Committee and updating that periodically to advance that work. So that's what we've identified there and kind of making sure that we keep annual reporting coming out and data collection going. That's really kind of a measurable outcome from that one. Now, we also want to be integrating new technologies, and our Fisheries Department has been really leading this, and so we're thinking about how we can take some of the things we've learned from Sonoma Water and others that are working in this space and applying those here in Marin, so expanding our passive integrated transponder antennas throughout the system is really new technology that we're integrating into our monitoring work, so that's really key. And then the final one is really supporting, recognizing that the district has an incredible resource of technical expertise that can help with restoration planning broadly and thinking about us being kind of this core collaborative hub within the community and specifically around sharing our lessons learned from our restoration work and monitoring work in Lagunitas Creek. So the first objective really is aligning around this Lagunitas stewardship plan and our Fisheries Department's work in Lagunitas Creek watershed and other watersheds that the district's infrastructure is interacting with. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Get my microphone on. Should we let you go through the whole thing, or should we stop along the way?
Probably stop along the way would be more effective.
Okay, all right. That's, I think it makes more sense. Any directors' comments on objective number one?
No, not a direct question. I think at first, the, first I thought creek restoration, maybe we should just say watershed restoration, but the way you explain it, really focusing on Lagunitas Creek makes a lot of sense. It gives us an identified goal and something that we can focus on as well. I really liked the last bullet point, the technical expertise point. I wonder if we can partner or somehow weave into this framework, and maybe it will happen later on in the objective or the goals, but educational partnerships so that we're looking at higher education facilities that would like to come and partner somehow for critical research. And I don't know if we want to put that in here, or maybe it works a little bit better under stewardship potentially too, but something to think about is my only other comment for them.
Sean, how much of the creek restoration work is actually mandated by state environmental requirements versus, you know, things that we're attempting to do out of good stewardship, good environmental stewardship?
So in our waterboard order for our releases in Lagunitas Creek, it says it will make progress towards restoring the system over time. There's not real hard, direct details on what that means, so in our Lagunitas stewardship plan that the district develops to comply with that document, we develop kind of our aspirational statements around restoration and how we're going to advance that over time and continue with our monitoring. So it is a requirement of our waterboard order, and it's kind of developed through this conversation with our community and Lagunitas TAC.
I'm curious about, maybe stepping back, and maybe this is the beginning of the presentation, but the difference between the goals and the objectives here, so that my comment on the goal, if you're looking for comments, is that it's pretty long. You want it to be really tight and clear and understandable. There's a lot in there. The last sentence kind of encapsulates a lot of what you're trying to do, but there seems to be more information in there and data and kind of next steps than goals and aspirations, so I'd suggest you tighten that up. In your objectives overall, and I think the creek restoration is the one that ties it closest to an overall goal, but I would think that that's, or an overall goal, but I would think that you might want to be a little higher level, because it's more than just creeks that we care for in our watershed resiliency work, we're caring for all sorts of other native plants and species and spotted owls and, you know, other endangered frogs, et cetera. So creeks are a part of it, but we are stewards for a lot more. So this seems to be one very specific project that we're working on, but I think the objective, you know, is not necessarily taking all that into account, so maybe a little more understanding of how you're thinking about it broadly speaking.
Yeah, so I probably should have started that there's going to be a lot of overlap in between many of these objectives when we're thinking broadly about the watershed. So, right, staying higher level, we're thinking about the watershed. Creeks are one component of the watershed where we have very direct objectives around our stewardship of that due to our having dams in the watershed itself and having requirements around monitoring and restoration. So that's why we're kind of focused here. You'll see when we get into the stewardship component, which is another, the third objective in this watershed goal, and we really do start getting into, let's, you know, collect more biological monitoring data to help us understand the state of the conditions and advance restoration activities. Larry?
Just to the opening statement, I think we all know it, but I think it bears stating it clearly that our watershed is the source of 75% of our water. And just, I think in terms of the many other things that it provides us, I think making sure that nobody forgets that that's really fundamentally why we care about it. I think that would be a good thing to weave in there. I think then in terms of the creek restoration objectives, there, I kind of think of like, these are pretty high level, and I think ultimately, maybe there's like a write-up that goes with this that's going to get more into the details, but I'm sort of looking for, like, how much habitat are we going to restore? You know, what are the specifics of what we're going to do? I can see, Ben, you're teeing up, you got...
Well, it's... If, the way we're in, it's a really important question, because it's kind of threshold for the design of a strategic plan, right? How much detail and what strategy versus tactics versus deliverables kind of thing? Our thought is keeping it at a strategic level and then through the annual work plan process, which, right, we'll follow right on the heels of it this year, we would look in detail and go through creek restoration. Okay, how are we going to advance the creek restoration objective this coming year? And that's when we would put details. Okay, we're going to get two sites, we're going to pursue this grant, granular detail in terms of annual deliverables.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the design, and that's actually part of, a key part we want to explore with the board as we get through tonight. Does this generally work, this higher strategic level with understanding that some of the measurables and details you may want to see aren't in here? And we could pivot and go there, you know, and talking with Charles, in my experience, typically you want strategic plan to, you know, fit in a strategy level and not necessarily detailed implementation.
It's a tension, I totally get, and I don't want to do annual planning for the next five years, right here, right now, in this. At the same time, I want to be able to say, we have a goal that in five years, we will have accomplished something too, and I think, because otherwise, we're not really leading ourselves to a five-year objective. So looking for maybe a compromised balance where we are giving ourselves some level of clarity where we can, at the end of the five years, go, did we achieve what we said we would do five years ago? Because we did sort of start with an intention and...
Yeah, you know, I was thinking here, I pitched to Sean, he had a good response of, could we put kind of an aspirational indicator, like on fish returns or something like that, but he rightfully said he doesn't control the oceans and the climate change and all that.
But you can create like surrogates, which is create more rearing habitat, or you can create more floodplain habitat. You can, and you can not just be more, but you can, you can semi-quantitate it by saying we'll increase it by 10% or other such things. And just because it does give an order of magnitude to what you're trying to accomplish, and I just think that kind of level of detail makes it less than using terms like advance, which I know I use these a lot too, so I'm guilty of this all over the place, but like, what does advance mean? Means it moves forward, but like, is that really helping us to know what level of effort to put at these things? So hence, just some level of quantification, I think would be really, really helpful. You know, when it comes to, this will be one of the topics I, of course, focus on a lot, given my background. I think that specifically with salmon, I do think we need, like, I know that the Lagunitas Creek Watershed Enhancement Plan has a lot of embedded salmon objectives. I think it would be helpful to bring some of them forward into ours, because they're, whether, these are our objectives, not the Lagunitas TAC objectives. I mean, there are parallel, we're trying to support and do a lot of our work that way, but I would like to maybe see some of our, some of that come forward again as specificity for us so that we can, so that we're not just saying we're implementing somebody else's plan. This is...
But to be clear, that's our plan. So, right, we developed that plan that has, and I think that is maybe for the creek restoration one, is one where objectives is going to be easy to implement, because we can say we're meeting the TMDL targets that the regional board developed through the implementation of this plan, and we could articulate that. There's other ones that it's going to be a little harder to be so clear with the objective.
Totally, okay. And then I want to highlight that I think it's great that you've got in here is focusing on Walker Creek and other of our tributaries. We often just think about Lagunitas when we have so much else to our watershed, so I think really giving some thought, you know, to how we make those other resources, and I know we're already thinking about these things, but I think, again, being clear that we aren't just seeing only Lagunitas Creek, that we do see the importance of Walker Creek and other of our tributaries to the main stem. And then the last part, I just want to focus on, I think, the part that others have mentioned here, which is the research component to this. I just think, you know, the technical expertise around, around coded wire tag and other things, passive monitoring is great. I think that that's kind of like a research objective that might almost, in some ways, benefit rolling it up as like we're advancing research, using our watershed as a research location, not only to advance our own monitoring, but also to help advance the general understanding about Koho, particularly because we are, again, an epicenter of Koho restoration on the central coast and something we're known for. Two small comments. I agree that we should add measurability somehow to all of our goals, that we want to look back and say we did it or we didn't. I don't know if you necessarily have to quantify it, right? It doesn't have to be a number, but we really should be able to measure it. The second comment is that even though fiscal responsibility is its own goal, I'd like to see it in every part of our strategic plan, and so I'd love to see it in our watershed stewardship program, where we're going to do this work as cost effectively as we can. We're looking to save money where we can and do our job as best as possible, so I think it'd be important to have that level of understanding across the board in all of our work and as an ethos in the organization in how we look at spending our money and being careful about it. That's a great point. I mean, and we've been super successful at securing grants, and so having that as a bullet point in there only, I think reinforces the fact that we have been really successful at paying for a lot of these things with state and federal funds.
Can I just make one comment on the measurability piece, just because I want to make sure that there's some sort of clear message coming out of here. I think when we look at a lot of these, and I want to get the cart too ahead of the horse, but there's a lot of well-funded district plans that are referenced in here, and I'll go back to the, I'll steal the thunder a little bit, the next one with the BIFIP piece. So for me, aligning that with already approved district plan that does spell out measurables, the level of detail in there for me is good enough for something like that, just because we already have that piece there.
All right, thank you for those comments. We'll go on to our wildfire resiliency one. So again, we have a little introduction before we go into the hard objectives associated with this one, and it is to advance our kind of multi-benefit restoration treatments on the landscape to create a more resilient watershed by scaling up our implementation of the BIFIP, right, and acknowledging that, and then also that we've been working on the development of the One Tam Forest Health Strategy that's helping guide this work and giving us a strong foundation for understanding the current state of the watershed. So then I'll walk you through the various objective or the underlying objectives for this one. The first one is to maintain partnerships between the watershed ranger and local regional state emergency response, recognizing really that our rangers are critical and they are supported through a strong network here locally, and that our first in emergency response activities is really central to the district's operations in terms of wildfire resiliency and having those partnerships and collaborative relationships in the community. The second one is sustain organizational capacity to increase the scale of the BIFIP. The district has invested more in the BIFIP. We've received funding from CAL FIRE and others, Coastal Conservancy, so really acknowledging that as we move forward with this work, we'll have to sustain it over time, and that requires capacity internally and with contractors to do all of the work that we do around invasive plants and achieving our wildfire risk reduction activities. And then advance strategic partnerships to secure funding for stewardship activities outlined in the BIFIP and as part of our long-term watershed restoration efforts. So I think you'll start to see that we have captured some of the ideas that you all have, and it's just kind of an organizational question if you want to see, you know, the question of partnerships for funding and each sub-objective or, you know, summarizing it here in the resiliency section makes sense. There just is a lot of overlap between a lot of these objectives when you're talking about the watershed specifically. And as we're implementing the BIFIP and scaling up that work, we're really becoming kind of a training ground for workforce, and so acknowledging that and ranger trainee program that was launched this year is a great example of that, who are kind of lowering the bar for entry into the ranger profession, but we also have that opportunity through our partnerships with CCC, CC&amp;B, AmeriCorps, and others that we work with. So just kind of leaning into the idea, in fact, that as we get state and federal funding to advance some of these restoration projects, as we partner with these groups, we're giving kind of this training opportunity within the community to find a career pathway in natural resources. And then acknowledging that for our staff to do their work safely, you know, we need to continue to invest in our resources to do this work for wild and firefighting and vegetation management, so ensuring that we have the capabilities and capacity to do the work that we're saying is kind of key and central to how we're thinking about our resiliency. So I'll stop there if you want to provide any comments or thoughts on how we're kind of developing this wildfire resiliency objective.
Sure, I think, I think the actual, excuse me, the actual objective, the first piece or the main part of the goal on the top sums up what I think might not be as clear here is that everything is done with preservation of the environment as well as habitat preservation, et cetera, and I think that also is amplified as the BIFIP takes all that into consideration too. So I do like the way this is structured, but for anyone looking at this saying, hey, this might not focus enough, I think it does focus enough, especially when you talk about the BIFIP piece. On the first bullet point, when you talk about support emergency response and mitigation strategies as part of partnerships throughout the region, I think it's good here, or it's important to hone in on some sort of a regional risk reduction strategy so that we are not operating in a bubble when it comes to any sort of disaster piece. And so when we look at what the county is doing or a regional approach to it, that we're participating in that as well and advancing our projects priorities based on the risk reduction for that. My second and final comment is the support the workforce development piece, very much like that, it's in there, especially when we look to force multiply our staff out on the watershed, we talked about sustainability for the vegetation management projects going in. I would like to incorporate local groups as well, potentially the Fire Foundry or Marin County Fire Seasonals as part of this, because I think there's some value and potential partnerships with both of those groups as well.
You know, Sean, I think I've said in the past as well, there's a few stakeholder groups that follow what we do very passionately with respect to the watershed, but the broader public and, as I've said before, I was in that category previously, had little understanding of the importance of the watershed and how much we have to invest for various aspects really of our quality of life here in Marin, and fire comes up for me as number one. I don't know if this falls immediately or neatly under this objective, but thinking carefully about how we continue to articulate what we're, why we're investing so much in these activities so that our broader public is increasingly supportive of efforts in the watershed seems very important. I just, I don't know where it falls.
More of a question, do you think it makes sense to add the risk side of after a disaster happens to this planning process? So what's our plan for when a disaster occurs? What are the risks that we're ready to take on? What different scenarios should we be prepared for? What are the steps in the process? Who do we reach out to? Which level of concern, you know, matters to whom? And it feels like, in many ways, everything that I've heard, fires are going to be inevitable. We're not sure where and how, that with the wrong wind and the wrong spark, you know, all of this may not matter as much, so, but we're still going to be responsible in some level, so how do we handle it? And I feel like that, that has to be a bullet, it's a comment I brought up a few times about having a risk presentation here about how we handle, you know, worst-case scenarios as an agency.
So Director Smith, the...
So Director Smith, the, I, I thought initially, and maybe I was off, you were going towards capturing the need to have a good emergency response plan and keep it updated and training and all of that. That's good. And that reflects like some of the overlap between these goals. Our thought is the notion of an emergency response plan and the needs and all the issues around it would be captured in goal, what was it? Two? Goal two, which is system, water system reliability. Because, you know, we want to capture fires. We want to capture earthquakes, floods. And you, you want to have a plan that's adaptive and has maybe different grab and goes based on the event. So that's where we're planning in the strategic plan to, to put that and talk about it with the board.
I don't understand the title. Seems like an oxymoron to me. Maybe you meant to say wildfire control resiliency, but I don't think the idea of making wildfire resilient is a really good idea grammatically.
Yeah, no, appreciate that comment on the title. Making the watershed resilient to wildfire. That's kind of the intention. Yeah. So no problem. We'll work on that.
I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
So the third objective under the watershed stewardship is stewardship. And this is really acknowledging, right? The district has a, a long relationship with the community and around Mount Tam. And we want to continue to engage the community in participating in the stewardship activities through a number of programs that we have every year. And then also recognizing that we have technical studies that we need to continue to do to understand the state of conditions on the watershed and within Marin more broadly. So the first kind of sub-bullet is sustain our annual biological monitoring to inform our scientific knowledge of the watershed and to support environmental compliance for district operations and long-term planning. The next one is to engage and contribute to technical expertise as part of regional stewardship efforts through One Tam Together Bay Area and Golden Gate Biosphere Network. This might be like a really nice place for that research concept to, to land, really just acknowledging our role more broadly. And then capturing kind of all of these volunteer activities, educational programs. And this final bullet really that we're leading habitat restoration work on the watershed through trail maintenance, environmental education, community science. And this is really an opportunity for us to help to not only ensure that we have a good environmental conditions into the future, but also that we're engaging people in helping the district meet those goals, but also to interact with and inform their understanding of the district's operations as their water supplier. So with that, any comments on stewardship? And, you know, this is one that does definitely overlap with every other section in our watershed component. But we're trying to be very focused on things that we can have as measurable outcomes in stewardship.
Larry, you want to go first? Okay. Good.
Sounds good. Just to keep hammering back on the research piece and our education research piece. And I think, I think you're spot on. I think it does live here. Makes sense. And some sort of concept of, and I think we use in partnership quite a bit. So maybe that's not the best word, but some sort of pathway where if the Educational Institute of Higher Learning wants to come in and provide some research on our watershed that we would benefit from, I think there's an opportunity here that would be good to, to pick up on at that point. Not the top priority, but leaving the door open for those types of opportunities. Thank you.
So I think, you know, going to the earlier point of that there's much more to our watershed than just our, than Lagunitas Creek. I think if, if stewardship, if objective three is really where we talk about the, the, the protection of all the other watershed habitat resources, I think we need to say something a little bit more about those, just because they are so vast and so important to others. We're not mandated in the same way that we might be with Lagunitas Creek. So I know there's an importance to, to break that out for that reason. But, you know, I think we, and I know that a lot of this is embedded in some of the reference partnerships and documents and stuff. But I, again, I would bring maybe some of the, not have all the points be so buried down. And again, maybe there's what you write up will have that come forward.
The, on that point, if I could, Director Schmidt, the, in the past, as we've talked about watershed, an important term for key stakeholders is biodiversity. We could think about another bullet here and talk about biodiversity and bring in some of the active programs we have. That could be a way to do it.
Yeah. I mean, at a, at a very high level, we're going, I, I would like to think that five years from now, our biodiversity will have grown and become more secure in a warming climate and in the face of the threat of, of wildfire, you know? And, and so I, I think that there's probably some, you know, almost like, like that. If it said that, like that would kind of in some ways cover sort of a blanket statement that we, that our goal is to have it better than it. In five years from now, that we're better off than we are today. I think that that's, I suspect that that's in, within our planning.
Do you have an idea for how they would measure that?
How you would measure it is by implementing these actions that are intended to, to increase security, better management and, and reduce threats associated with climate change wildfire and, and impacts of public access and other things.
Cause at least from Larry Minneke's, you know, his complaint has been dead critters. So from the activities, laying on the trail, you know?
I would just note that, you know, first bullet, sustain our annual biological monitoring has a lot of that embedded within it. And so we can build that out a little bit to acknowledge some of the work that the district already does. And I don't know that in five years, we want to say, you know, a goal of biodiversity has been, you know, enhanced in a, in a measurable way for a lot of the monitoring that we do. I think we want to be careful about what we think is achievable in that timeframe. But we can definitely think through how to bolster that kind of first statement.
Sure. And I get that. And I know that it's, that it's very hard, especially on such a big watershed to actually get numerically specific, like how is by, you know, are, are there, is there more acreages of a particular list species or so on and so forth? At the same time, monitoring is just measuring. And so I feel like there's, you know, without some aspirational, some, you know, objective to make that things are, we're making things better by doing these things. That's how we are measuring progress. So I just, I, I totally get the importance of monitoring and stuff, but it does in and of itself doesn't, you monitor to, to measure what? And, and for what?
Monty, now you're sending us in a deep rabbit hole because this is a really interesting topic. And but, but Sean, am I wrong that I feel like there is a lot of actual counting of specific species? That's how we know the spadatal population is quite robust at the moment. We're counting bees. We're counting different plant types through the collaboration with One Tam. And they do have a baseline report. This has been updated. I've been really impressed by the level of actual counting that we're doing.
So one way I'd think about this is a little bit is as part of our partnerships with the Golden Gate Biosphere Network, there's an effort going on to do a climate vulnerability assessment to identify various species that are vulnerable to climate change. So taking broader studies like that and understanding how they can be applied to the watershed is actually a helpful way to guide projects rather than doing species-specific conservation, which is, is a difficult thing to do. So being more kind of holistic in our thinking and recognizing that we're one piece of a bigger puzzle here in Marin in terms of public lands, habitat and species of concern. And keeping that in mind, because we do have limited resources for what restoration projects we might do on the watershed. And so in developing these, that's what we were thinking about in the next five years. What projects do we have that we might be implementing that can actually advance some of these targets or priorities?
That's a great example though, which is that there, I, I agree. We, we need to be guided in what drives us and, and identifying vulnerabilities and, and having those vulnerabilities then drive our actions is in and of itself a really important, would be a really important milestone and an accomplishment that we took those assessments and we integrated them into our planning so that we're driven toward increasing security. I can't tell where, 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 where there's in, in between stewardship and, and facilities. I guess I just want to say that I, I feel like there's somewhere in here, I'm wondering whether there's a, a potential for a goal to look at how we can make our watershed, the, all the resources that we have within our watershed more readily available in, in, in the name of stewardships that we're sharing access to our watersheds. And I'm going, where I'm going here is with some sort of a visitor center or educational center. I don't, you know, you're, we're getting there. Okay. All right. Then I will hold that in for the next section.
Before we leave this though, I, I think it, it's an interesting question. And Ruth Patrick addressed this 50 years ago with a biodiversity index. I, I think unless you divide, you, you have a problem in understanding this. Like divide critters per acre or species per acre. That's kind of what her biodiversity index was. And it was aimed exactly this question of trying to quantify the data in a way that you can understand it to compare it over time. So give some thought to that.
But I think again, I would kind of point back to that second bullet where we're talking about One Tam and we can build this out. But the Peak Health Report is, is kind of the state of the mountain, if you will, in terms of biodiversity and biological monitoring that's rolling up just a tremendous amount of monitoring work that's going on among all the public land managers into a report that's digestible, that understands kind of the condition and state of things. And I, I think we want to be leaning into that level of partnership and understanding the biodiversity of the region. So we're not just looking to specifically at what we may or may not be able to control in terms of biodiversity.
Out of curiosity, how high do we go? What, what do we consider to be on the watershed? 10 meters, 100 meters, 1,000 meters? I mean, I know, you know, eagle flies over it. Does he count?
If he flies over and he gets counted, he counts. All right. Moving on to our next one, which is recreation. We were very targeted in our kind of definition of this. We were saying district will maintain a welcome and enriching environment to support visitors engaging in nature-based recreational activities. And the sub-bullets that we, we have here for the objective are to advance priority outcomes of the watershed recreation management planning feasibility study to better under, to better support visitors and protect the watershed's biodiversity as part of our ongoing adaptive management strategy. And really just kind of, right, nesting this one under our watershed board policy seven that kind of says we'll engage in adaptive management and monitoring of recreation to understand how we manage the watershed for the public access. So recognizing that we've been going through a long study and we're going to have some opportunities that come out of that study and that we'll be advancing those. The second one is to complete the Zalea Hill Trail Restoration Project through enhancement of our trail facilities and removal of our social trails and restoration of the sensitive habitat. We have our project adopted. We have very clear components that need to be completed over the next five years. And those would be kind of measurable elements that would be in the work plan for advancing that one. This is kind of an aspirational one, and this is advanced improvements along Cataract Trail to replace aging infrastructure. This is one of the most used trails on the watershed. It's loved. It's got very, it's got a lot of needs. Let's say that, right? A lot of limitations as well. And so just thinking about this over the next five years, what can we do to improve the state of things there? This is kind of one that goes back to Director Kush's comment and how are we sharing this information out better? And we do recognize that that should be an objective that we want to tell people about all the good things the district's doing and acknowledge some of the difficult things we need to be working on. And so creating nature-based self-guided tours, this is something we did over the last year around our prescribed burn on top of the mountain and some of our forest re-restation work as well. So we're looking to educate the community about the watershed's biodiversity, water resources, wildfire and climate change, and doing that through new interactive elements. And then the final bullet here is to evaluate priority roads and trails to inform adaptive management to guide improvements to recreational facilities, including hiking trails, fire roads, picnic areas, parking lots and restrooms. And I think, you know, a component of this is looking at our roads and trails plan. And so we're just kind of acknowledging that within the recreation, there's planning work to be done in the future. So with that, we'll take any comments on this one.
You know, understanding Zalea Hill has been a massive project. Seeing that one to completion makes sense. And I'm wondering if the Cataract Trail is, is more specified, more specific of a target as opposed to just saying advanced improvements for aging trail infrastructure such as Cataract Trail. So call it up by name, but not say this is the one thing we're going to look at hopefully over the long run for that. The last bullet point, evaluate priority roads and trails. I think there's an opportunity to put in some sort of kiosk or informational piece into that component. Because that wouldn't just be in a, in a welcome center or an educational center, but throughout the watershed, you know, the, the signs are very powerful, especially with really good information when so much is happening out there. Really allow them to see the same vision that a lot of our staff and, and our, our staff is doing. I think the, the word hiking in the, including hiking trails and wondering if that, is that called out for a reason? Or is it, is there a way to put in equestrian trails, bike trails? Or does it make sense to just put in including trails, fire roads, et cetera?
Yeah, there's not a reason. It's just one of the ways we describe fire roads and hiking trails. So we can think about the way that we describe kind of our facilities on the watershed in that terms.
Yeah. If it's going to align with the rest of the vocabulary, then thank you. That was it.
Cringie.
Sean, it's a little hard to talk, the first bullet, you know, obviously doesn't have the specificity of the others. We're all waiting for those priority outcomes, obviously. Will we be updating this objective when those priority outcomes have been decided so that they are as clearly specified as the others?
So the way I think I'd suggest us thinking about it perhaps is that this is a objective in the watershed to move this planning process forward towards implementation of opportunities. Those opportunities will be things that we review with you as part of our feasibility study concluding. And we'll be getting priorities from you all and direction on how to advance those opportunities. And so I would say that, you know, bringing that document to its final form and, you know, giving direction to staff on what opportunities you want to advance would be kind of the metric there, the way I'm thinking about it.
Similar to the previous discussion about strategy versus operations. So yeah, just, I think, I think obviously there'll be a lot of discussion in there. We may want to identify a few things that really are worth highlighting in our, in our broader strategy related to the outcomes of the plan.
Yeah. Once again, I feel like we were bouncing around between high level and super focused. And, and so it's confusing to me to understand what's an objective and in how this is presented. The stewardship objectives were super high level. This is like naming specific trails that we're working on. So I, I, you know, I, I'm not sure I totally understand how we're defining goal, objective, et cetera. But I'm pretty sure there's a lot of other trails that we're working on in our recreation plan that are not mentioned here and some that are pretty clear. And, and, and so I think the only thing that I can, would focus on would be on the higher level. I would love us as part of our strategic plan to have a much better understanding per One Tam, how our recreation policies are different or similar to our other neighbors and why. So I think it would be a really good thoughtful process to understand why do we allow some trails to be used in ways that others don't? And vice versa. And, and, and that kind of review, I'd, I'd say would be really, really helpful for us. Why are we different? There, there's obvious reasons why we are different. But some of them, some of the policies may not reflect necessarily water resiliency or other.
It seems to me that you're missing the first bullet point, which is exactly what Ron Teve said a few minutes ago, that something to the effect of the primary goal of the watershed is to produce drinking water. I think that needs to be caveated in front of this so that people understand that while it's great that we can get a multipurpose out of the watershed, its real value is as our drinking water supply. So something like that, I think, would be a very helpful bullet that could basically sit in front of all of these. And I'm not exactly sure what that advanced priority outcomes means for sure. So.
Larry, can I just comment real quickly on that? And I, I am in strict alignment with that comment, what you're saying. I think I, we all are. I just question that if we put it in the mission, the vision all the way down, are we worried that we're going to forget about it by the time we get to page four? And it's going to be all of a sudden, it's, oh my God, we forgot to put in that this is our primary priority and we should allow motorcycles on the watershed? Or is this this constant push to say, just remember, just remember? And I think that for me, And I think that for me, seeing the vision, seeing it in the mission statement really codifies and solidifies that importance of that. Do we really need to reiterate it all the way throughout the plan? I question its effectiveness on that.
Yeah. The only reason I brought it up is because of recreation. There's, as you'll find in this job, it's one of the toughest balances between what are we really doing? Historically, East Bay Mud is a perfect example. They just, and, and even today, they're pretty restrictive on East Bay Mud about allowing their watershed to be used. People do it. Jerry Gilbert had a private gate behind his house, which backed up to the watershed. So he had access to the watershed. But I don't know anybody else that has that. And historically, it, it's why we have those cabins and things, because we had watershed keepers live there. Every major water company had them. And they were, I don't know, cross between cops and helpful people. But the idea was keep people away from the watershed. So you just don't allow the opportunity. Like we've had issues of people swimming like at cataracts and places like that. You know, it's hard to know what the risk is. It's, it's definitely higher than if you don't allow it. You know, one of the most risky things we do in this business is the transmission of certain pathogenic bacteria, pathogenic organisms that get through the treatment system. The general approach is you don't allow them into the system. So you don't have to remove them. So it's, it's a little tricky, this whole area. And what I, my thinking here, Matt, was to this one in with a special flag that people understand that, yeah, we're all for this with respect to its primary goal. So I don't know the answer to the question.
Yeah, I, I've seen in, in my time here, the word recreation can be a bit hot for some folks. And we did think about it, but it, it, it does warrant discussion. The fact is we get, right, 2 million plus people that do use it for recreation. That said, it's such a hot word. We could say visitor experience or something like that and just not, not set it up.
That's probably better.
Kind of where you're going.
So maybe to channel Jack Gibson, you know, we, we don't necessarily, you know, look at having more people recreating as being a goal. I, I, I might add that we don't necessarily want to have fewer, but you know, the, the point I think that Larry is making is that there's an impact on recreation around water supply and, and habitat. And, and so I think it's even more than just water supply. I mean, I think, I think it's all of it. So understanding the impact of recreation on our other key points in the mission has to be in there.
Yeah. Great points. I would just note that, you know, in structuring this and thinking about how it all flows, all these things are interacting together, right? Stewardship, restoration, visitor experience, recreation, whatever it might be. And in that first paragraph that in, the, the purpose of that intro, if you will, it wasn't, it was to really state some of these key components. And the first sentence is about protecting water quality and having that kind of the foundation to the district's operation in terms of our watershed. So you can see like we, we've got all these things. We're thinking about them and we're open to suggestions on how you'd like to see them presented here.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to jump in. I actually, I have a slightly different view on whether or not this should be called out as recreation. I feel like it should be because my concern is that for too long, we've been passing on that issue to some degree. And there's a large segment of our public that's honestly really frustrated because they feel like the board hasn't been making tough decisions with respect to recreation. So the fact that we're calling it out to me implies that we will be making tough decisions that are driven by the current management planning feasibility study, which we, we haven't seen yet. It's not yet completed, which will be coming out. So I believe that's going to be driving all of these issues with respect to recreation. I'd like to see that first, but I don't want to give any impression that we are, we're passing again. That, you know, that we really are going to take this one on and make decisions for better or worse with respect to recreation.
We shall see.
Well, I think, you know, to follow up the word recreation, you know, I, I think we haven't really defined exactly what it meant. And I'm not saying we need to do now either, but it's not just someone out for a run or a bike ride, horse ride. It's also the people that are doing educational walk around Phoenix Lake. And I think, you know, you look at that, like the nature-based self-guided tour would be a form of recreation on there. So, well, I think you could probably sleight of hand turn it into visitor experience. I think recreation is recreation and why tap dance around it.
And we'll, we'll keep in mind too, that Kent pitched this as a park. So you'll hear that coming back at us. In the original granting of the land, he said, you know, it's something, I don't know the exact words. Jack Gibson would, but I don't remember them, but something to the effect of, you know, it's, you have this park in Central Marin. So the, the point I'm trying to get at here is that the reason for the touchiness is the, it, it's kind of like water quality standards. We're having a huge flight in Flint right now about this exact issue of you have to meet all the standards at the same time. It's the same issue here. I don't know the solution and the only thing I've ever observed that there was any hesitation has to do with e-bikes. That one is complicated in part by Mike Swayze's actions. Where he just said, no, there are motorcycles. No, can't be on there. And that kind of started the ball rolling in a way that allowed certain resistance. But like I say, you'll, you'll find this is probably the trickiest area. Because if you think of it clearly, what are the simultaneous things that have to be satisfied? Water quality, water supply, you know, those are the driving ones. Then the rest is kind of like icing on the cake. And how do you satisfy them all at the same time? And maybe that's not even a possible task. I don't know. Maybe there's a cost that's too high for, for one use compared to another. I mean, you know, I, I have been caught in this tricky area as, as Matt knows about the horses. I am touchy about the horses. Introducing mammals, large mammals on the watershed is a tricky task. I, I don't know much about equine health, but all you have to do is walk out from Deer Park where the stable is and walk for hundreds of feet on six, eight, 10 inches of horse manure. It's surely not aesthetically pleasing, may not be much of a risk, but it's not a very pleasant experience.
So appreciate the comments on the.
Sorry, I can't pass because you know, this is such a fun topic. But I, I, I think fundamentally, I, what, we should give thought to this because this is obviously important. We're hanging here for a good reason. And I, I just think that we have to stop putting this as a, as a either or. We're going to be doing both. We know what our primary mission is, is that we are going to make sure we have safe and reliable water. That we will make sure is the priority. But I don't think, I think that, that well-executed management can allow us to do recreation and water supply and visitor experience and educational programming and many other experiences. But 2 million visitors on the watershed tells us that we have, we have a recreational resource. And I think dodging it isn't, doesn't make it better managed. And so I, I'm, I think there's a lot of high hopes about a recreation management plan to help us start really tackling this in a meaningful way so that we can break the sense that it's an either or, a zero sum game and, you know, make clear what our priorities are, but that we can do this in, in a, in a way that's sustainable and protects our resources.
Great. Appreciate the input around this one. You know, people are part of the landscape. We are adjacent and in this. And stewardship is inherently about people participating and being part of that landscape. So we'll take all those comments in to consideration as we revise that section. Objective five, this is the final one. This is the, the facilities, you know, kind of a general topic title, but it, it does relate back to what we're trying to say here, which is the district will ensure the watershed facilities are operational and well-kept there by supporting four critical aspects, emergency response and readiness, water system operations, visitor access for recreation and educational purposes, and ongoing environmental restoration efforts within the watershed. That's a lot. And this is kind of a summary objective in some ways, because a lot of our management plans that we are implementing fall within this. So our, our first one is to carry out multi-benefit watershed maintenance projects that preserve the function of the watershed's facilities while improving watershed's ecological services. This one could be expanded slightly to say like, we're implementing our roads and trails plan. That's our environmental document that allows us to do the management on the watershed. And as we look to update that, there's opportunities for us to think more critically about kind of those ecologically beneficial practices that we want to be involved in. The second one is to integrate watershed facilities into the facility's master planning process to guide key updates to our facilities to improve our Sky Oaks headquarters, which is an aging office and evaluate opportunities for environmental education facilities on the watershed. And, and right, that's a big statement, but that could take the form of a lot of things, right? We see educational facilities just simply being benches and people to gather somewhere. So keeping in mind that that, that could be further defined. The third one being enhance ranger residents while evaluating opportunities for watershed seasonal employee housing to help remove barriers for early career professionals looking to work in the natural resource field in Marin County, right? We have two ranger residents that are in need of repair and updating. There's a limitation to how we recruit people and retain our seasonal staff. We also rely on AmeriCorps programs for our fisheries program. Those are very, you know, low-wage jobs in early career, but living here in Marin is a real barrier to us securing ongoing AmeriCorps folks. We also are engaged with the AmeriCorps program at UC Berkeley now through their fire found, or their, it'll come to me. Grizzly core, thank you. And we need to think about like, if that's going to be something that we continue to utilize, is there an opportunity for us to provide some housing? So then the final, the third, fourth one is to advance priority elements of the West Peak Restoration Project conceptual plant, plan. Really recognizing there was a low entry to that project, which is just to remove the remaining degraded infrastructure to improve wildlife corridors and habitats. We have fences and old telephone poles and some aging pieces of infrastructure up there. This was something that was advanced by volunteers back in the day. The conservancy helped the district evaluate restoration opportunities. There's some low hanging fruit there that we wanted to identify as part of our facility updates. And then the final one, to apply modern best practices, updating the roads and trails management plan to support ongoing maintenance of watershed facilities to protect water quality, support sustainable roads and trails. I think that's what we're trying to talk about here and preserve biodiversity. So with that, I'll kind of open it up for discussion around the facility's objectives and what you might want to see.
Take my place in line here. So the only thing that I'd like to just make sure, it's two things. One thing to get weed into the narrative here is, and I think you captured it, ensuring that the facilities will be ready for emergency response. And that would be hardening, structural hardening for wildfire resiliency. I'm not sure that's the right phrase now, but I'll, we'll get it a little bit better. And then the other one was evaluate opportunities for environmental education facilities. And I think to piggyback on what Monty was saying is expand that to a visitor welcome or some other term so that we're not just pigeonholing to that. Because right now the Sky Oaks headquarters, I think really to me seems like a district staff facility with some service opportunity, but actually having a welcome center that it almost could be an expanded educational facility as well would be something that I think makes sense as we start looking to improve our visitor experience.
Sean, are any of the objectives here potential stretches for us financially? I know we've been really good at getting grant funding for watershed activities, but some of these seem like significant steps up from what we're currently doing with respect to infrastructure. Is there any concern here that we're setting up objectives that might be hard to achieve financially?
So we're thinking five years out. I think there's a lot of opportunity in five years. There's a lot of ways to leverage our local resources with state and federal funding opportunities that we know are out there for some of these priority efforts, specifically around roads and trails. You know, we have a lot of roads and trails. We have a lot of opportunities and needs out there. We, with regard to maybe the West Peak Restoration, you know, that's there and being used and small, small actions can have, you know, meaningful improvements. So it's really about scaling some of these. I don't think that we're setting up for, you know, over being too ambitious. I think that it's just a matter of scaling what we're, and maybe that comes into work plan development for each of these, like what are we really targeting in that five-year timeframe? I think in regards to ranger residents, that's, that is a big one. That's, those are expensive updates, but they're also critical assets, right? When we think about what those facilities are, those, those are key. Not only for helping with retain good quality ranger staff who have an opportunity to be on the watershed for all the benefits that they bring to being there, but also for the long-term kind of benefit of the community, having those updated makes a lot of sense.
It, it does. And when I see some of those old residences in the state they're in right now, it's really, it's, it's just too bad. But it also feels really expensive to, to, to do something about it. So, you know, just, just, I guess, a, a, a consideration.
Yeah, I agree, Ronje. But I, I, once again, I think you're, you're getting into a lot of real details here about specific projects. And I, it's hard for me to tell if you're asking for a budget approval. These, these are, you know, e, each trail that you talked about, does that mean we're going to be spending that money or these in the budget already? Is, is the residences I was looking at also, I'm super supportive of making some really good thoughtful moves here. I don't think we're at a point as a board where we can say, we approve enhancing the residences right now, because we have not seen that budget or any proposal. So you might want to say review instead of enhance and review and, and, you know, come up with like thoughtful ways to present us some of the issues that you're seeing as problems rather than coming up with asking, in essence, what I see isn't asking for money without knowing exactly how much you're asking for. Because there's 10 of these things that make sense, but we can't do them all. So this one might make sense and it does to me. I'm, I'm support, I think we can do really cool things, but we have to see it all together before we, I think, can say it's an objective. The objective could be, let's review it, let's understand it, let's come back with a plan.
Sure. I don't understand what watershed's ecological services means. Just as a comment, I, I don't, I mean, I got a concept, but I'm not sure I follow what the English is saying. The comments about the facilities are interesting in terms of specifics. You may or may not be aware that we looked very seriously at the log cabin, making it into a visitor center. But as I, what I remember is something about a bark beetle or something like that, that basically made it lucky to even have it kind of thing, let alone to try to restore it. We, we did, I, I'm thinking six figures were thrown at it to at least start the ball rolling. But I think we backed off because the thing was more of a fire hazard than a, a benefit. And not surprising. I mean, who knows what they envisioned it lasting when they built it? So it, it's a tricky area. And I, I think just one last thing on this is keep in mind that it might be very fair to require some form of membership to utilize the watershed. You've got 2 million people. If they just paid a buck, it's 2 million bucks. I know there's 13 entrances. I know all that stuff. But I think that might be a way to fund some of these things is to hit the user. I mean, I saw an ad for Disneyland the other day and they were bragging about the fact that it's only $50 a day for children under 12, something like that. It seemed like a lot of money to me. And, you know, they, they were pitching it as, this is great. We're doing it at a discount. And so if people are willing to spend that kind of money, which they obviously are, maybe there's a way for us to enjoy some of that fruit too. It's a lightning rod.
Yeah. I'll just note for the, when we use the 2 million, we should probably want to just, you know, understand that number is not unique individuals, right? When our, when we did our visitor survey on the watershed, that's what we see as counts of people going by trail counters. But right, if you live next to the watershed, you're probably coming in a couple of times a week and you're counted four times.
Disney wouldn't allow you to enter without paying. So, you know, it, it.
How many, how many individuals?
That's a hard number to get to. We didn't get to that in the visitor survey.
Have to like parse out the people who repeatedly visit. I, 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 I think, you know, around this issue around the resident ranger residence, I think. around this issue around the ranger residence, I think suffice to say, we, we need to, we need to figure out how we're going to address this, this housing need. If we want to be able to retain staff, rangers particularly because of the proximity they are to the watershed and the importance that that serves in terms of protections and, and fire preparedness and other things. Can we, maybe it's like develop a plan, like develop something that we can then consider before it's not, this isn't, you know, approving the, whatever the cost would be to enhance this. It's that what we really probably at the best is in the next couple of years is get a plan together that we then make a decision around. And I think that that's what we, I'd like, I, I mean, I want to address this. I think this is actually really an important issue. It is, you know, if we want to retain good people. And I, and I think also the same thing with the AmeriCorps and Grizzly Corps people. I mean, these are, this is cost effective dollars when we are hiring somebody for like, I could get, maybe you know, the numbers. I think it's like 20, like under $20,000 and you get a person for a whole year who cares, who learns, who, part of their objectives are going out and talking about the watershed that they're protecting. It's like such good, and it's great training ground. These people turn into wildlife and, and conservation professionals that continue to serve. So again, these are like the kind of things that are, I think, if we do it right, we can, we can do this. And I also just wondered too, whether again, if we're talking about housing, are there housing funds? Like let's be aggressive about any, any state public local dollars that are available. If we're providing, if we're helping to address housing issues, maybe we can get some of the costs of that offset. And I just, I would say, you know, that the other, the integrated watershed facilities master plan, is this going to be updated? Like when you say integrate watershed facilities into this, into the watershed, the facility's master plan, are we updating the facility's what master plan? Is that?
Ben, do you want to take that one?
We're, we, we, we don't have currently a facility master plan.
It's in capitals, though.
Right. We're, we're, we're kicking it off. We're going to bring the initial discussion to the board. We're planning December ops. As you may have picked up, the timing of that is being driven by the unique opportunity that currently exists with the very suppressed commercial real estate market and maybe opportunities that relate to this building. But we'll, we'll bring that to the board. We're looking holistically at this building watershed and the yard across the street and we'll talk about it. We're, we're looking at it as a cost efficiency effort and we'll explain what that means. But a lot of where that comes from is the upcoming investments that we have in this facility, just to keep it standing sort of operable. So more to come on that, but our thought is a fair amount of this will feed into that plan.
Gotcha. So I think part of what I'm just by asking that question is I think we should upfront say, complete a facilities master plan that integrates blah, blah, blah. Same thing with the road and trails management plan. We're going to complete an update of it, which will apply best modern practices and yada, yada. But look, to me, those are creating measurable milestones that are very specific that people understand that over the next five years.
Uniquely on this one, we can think about the best way to do it. The facility plan, I think, will be nested in the goal to the system reliability that talks broadly about our facilities, which is why here we're just indicating the linkage.
Okay. Okay. That, that is helpful. Okay. I'll, I'll second the importance of having a broad facilities plan, looking at all of our assets, not, not, I'm not talking about water enhancement and pump stations, but, but more like all, all of the other work environments. Yeah, thank you.
Those are all great discussion points. Thank you. I'll just respond to the one regarding like enhancing ranger residents and just acknowledge that the one before that about workforce development, right? This is strategic plan. We're trying to set us as an organization up to have directives that allow us to tap into those funding sources that can make us more competitive in that space in terms of being able to do things we haven't done in the past because it's just a unique time. And we have a unique space in terms of the watershed wildfire issues, workforce needs and housing. So trying to connect that, but we'll work on the language for how we present that. So that is in summary, everything. So I'm going to take you back to the beginning of the presentation and hand it over to Charles.
Before we go there, it seems to me that the county could be a really good partner in this. I think they would be interested, especially Supervisor Redoni. He, he's a water guy. And I think that's something we should think about. Because I was running through my mind, just what, what you could do here. I have made this statement many times. I, I've only received two phone calls in the time I've been on the board in 18 years. And both phone calls were about individuals, friends who wish to purchase real estate that the district owns, this building being one of them and 100 Larkspur being the other one. And, you know, that's an interesting concept about doing something here. I hadn't heard that one before. The, the guy that did this one was a friend, wanted to do same thing here, double the size of that structure. So there's room and interest in that. And it's an interesting concept. And the third thing I'd like to say is that, you know, while it may be a great deal to get somebody for 20,000, maybe that's kind of not the thinking we need, huh? Maybe we need to pay them what we need to pay them so that they can enjoy a living wage too. Even though we can get them for that price, you know, in the golden rule sense, maybe we need to invest a little more and, you know, make it more livable, which would include the Rangers too, in that statement.
Just on that one, Larry, I just want to be clear that what it's what it costs us. It's not what they get paid. It's that, that's our contribute. That's what the person who provides the experience pays. They get paid more than that and, and have other benefits and, and so forth. So, yeah.
But I know what our Rangers get paid. So it's the same issue, you know, just because we can doesn't mean we should. Get them for that price.
Yeah. So, okay.
Good evening. Great discussion. This is what we set out as the objective is to talk about this, get your feedback. I think it'd be good to pause here and broaden the question a little bit since we made Sean go first. You have a little bit of a sense now of the framing of goals and objectives. And Jed, you've been explicit tonight of, of getting the right level of detail, right strategic level, but just wanted to see if any of you had any further thoughts of just looking at this first one we put in front of you to guide the refinement of the other ones that are going to come shortly. Sir, any thoughts from anybody on that? Okay. So generally we're heading in the right direction.
But one small, we, we all had different comments about things that we thought should be in here that are really part of other major goals. So think through which, which are the overriding ones that matter that should be in everything, you know, is it? Is it that we're here to make sure we have affordable, clean drinking water, potable water for people? Is it that we should be fiscally responsible? Yeah. What are, what are the, the key ones that should be in all of them? Or do they just reside up at the top?
Yeah. Okay. That's helpful. So I just want to put this in front of you all the time. This is, this is the framing that we're working on. You've already heard that another tier is going to be the annual work plans. It's not on this chart. So the intent is that these all nest together. And I think we're all on the same page of the challenge of where do we talk about something at the right level? How far do we drill it down? Where do we repeat it? So we're going to keep working on that, keep, keep talking with you about that. I wanted to bring these back more explicitly, the vision and mission. We've tweaked them a little bit based on the conversation we had. I think a couple of, a couple of meetings ago. So I wanted to bring them back for another pass. If you have thoughts, further thoughts, given that you're starting to see goals and objectives. And you'll certainly get other, as you go through the other goals and objectives, get more chance to modify these. But I wanted to just check and see if there's anything as you start to see goals and objectives, are we, are we still on track with the right level of our vision and mission here? Okay, that's good. All right. Good. I like that. So then we did the goals, just to remind you that, so we started with goal three, just because Sean was just ready to go. Champion at the bit to talk about it. Now, so we have the five goals laid out. And then here's, here's how they're going to flow forward. So next week, we're talking to you about two goals. We know the water supply reliability one is of high importance to all of you and the fiscal responsibility one. So a pretty meaty conversation next week. For those two, December 19th, the resilient water system. And then organizational excellence, January 9th. And then the end of January, we come back with the whole thing packaged together. So you can see how they all fit and nest together. And then the board retreat in March to talk about annual work plans. So that's the general flow of things as we go from here. I think as we do more goals, you'll see that there is overlap and there are cross references between them. So figuring out our language to do that and making that clear is, is a part of our challenge on the, on the word side of things. That's all we had in terms of setup, context, where we are, where we're going.
Any board comments?
Just one final comment as we look at the other remaining four goals. I think there's been a lot of time and energy and, and resources invested in some pretty deep studies or some plans that have been going on. And and I appreciate the fact those were brought forward in goal number three and actually utilize and build on what we've done before. So continuing to incorporate those in the other goals, I think makes a lot of sense. And it also shows the investment was good money that we're using to move forward on.
And the board comments?
Yeah, I have one. What are you envisioning in an annual work plan? What does that mean?
Return to Ben for that one.
So similar to what we did last year, the idea is to get alignment and direction from the board on key initiatives, right? Beyond the routine activities that we do that we want to take on this year. And this year will benefit from the strategic plan we have developed. So we'll be looking at the different goals and how what we're bringing to the board links and builds and moves these goals and objectives forward in a very clear way. There, there may be some objectives, for example, the year one, we're suggesting we don't move on, right? So this will be a discussion that will be informed by the strategic plan, other discussions, of course, your interests. And, you know, the, the resources and priorities that we have in front of us. So that's the thought to spend a day, you know, fresh from this effort to develop, okay, this coming year. And that is similar to what we did this year, I would expect would have milestones and dates and deliverables, very, a high level of specificity, very different than this. And every year, right? For the next five years, kind of follow on. How successful were we last year? What are we going to build on this year?
How do you integrate that with budget?
It's a good question. I mean, the, the budget, we do have a two year budget, so it's fixed this next coming year. So it would be within the budget. That would be a constraint, resources and, and funding. But right, you know, some of it will be, you know, related to the capital plan. So there, there's fluidity there. And really what we want is alignment on priorities. And what we, we can achieve and we'll have that discussion.
It might be good to, to talk through your interactions with the staff with each of these goals, where, how did their input get received and, and, you know, how was it helpful? You know, how many people participated? And, you know, how, you know, kudos to folks that added some really thoughtful things. So it'd be really good to have in each of the next ones. And if you have any comments on this one, it'd be great.
Yeah. Briefly, so we started this with the meeting that Ben and Adrian coordinated with all the watershed staff, reviewing the previous strategic plan and really identifying what wasn't in there and what needed to be in there and what priorities folks, you know, had initially. We drafted the watershed goal and the objectives and then circulated that again for everyone to provide input into. We took those comments and then made our final revisions and then did one final review collectively of the language, just seeing if anybody wanted to frame anything slightly different. And throughout that whole process, we incorporated it when the initial conversations, the, really the focus was how unreadable and, and helpful the last strategic plan was at a staff level. And so wanting to have a little more clarity around how to advance things like the BFFIP in this next watershed goal.
Any other smaller groups or committees, or you just did it broadly to everyone and got input or did you?
So the watershed group's 25 people. We were going to do it by work groups. They requested to do it collectively. They liked to hear what others had to say. So that's how we did it.
Sean, in that process of, of, of reviewing the prior strategic plan with the group, was there any effort to determine how much progress had been made towards goals and objectives that were developed previously?
In reviewing it, there was a lot of acknowledgement that there was just big concepts, not really specific. And that's why maybe we got too specific here in some of these, but it was that we were trying to articulate that if we had adopted a secret document for Zelia Hill, that we were going to carry that out. We had grant funding to do that. We wanted to be clear. It's very, our staff know what that means. You know, we've been working on this. There's a number of trails that need to be closed, ones that need to be open. That's just in their head. And so that's very actionable. So that's what we tried to articulate here.
Right. And, and, and as Ben was saying, some of those may be better placed in the annual work plan, those measurable goals that we'll be monitoring. Ben, are you planning to evaluate us on the year's progress since the last goals were set?
We will, as part of the annual work plan development, certainly review this last year's and what we accomplished, what, where the residuals are. And really talk about why we didn't meet some accomplishments. Cause I do want, right, we want to institutionalize a work plan to be a real working document that guides our activities. So I do think that review and check in and taking the hard questions is, is a critical part of institutionalizing what we're trying to do with the strategic plan and the work plans.
I would add one point to your question. That is that I've been working with Adrian because Adrian and Ben met with all the staff in different groups. And so we've taken all that input and organized it around the goals because people brought things up that might not be in their group, but we're, so we've organized that around the goals. And then each team that's developing the goals and objectives has that to work from. So that input from the whole organization is going in as well. So.
Okay. If nothing else, we can open to public comment?
Yes, we have several. We actually have five right now. Mr. Phil Sauter, Tom Boss, and then Vernon Huffman.
Thank you for a really great presentation. It's always good to attend a board meeting that focuses on the watershed. Our most valuable asset and one which has been providing Marin County with all or most of its potable water for over a century. It's gratifying to see staff and the board continue its commitment to this irreplaceable source of high quality local water. And impressive to see the knowledge and skills we have to support this commitment. But it's also true that we'll all soon come together in another meeting to talk about ways to blend this pristine water with other less pristine water from outside the district. We've made peace with purchasing Sonoma water and blending it with Marin water. But we'll also be considering blending in saltwater, brackish water and wastewater, all suitably treated, of course, but nowhere near the quality of water that exists in our own backyard. For me, it requires some mental gymnastics to meet one day to talk about protecting pristine water from our watershed. And then meet a few days later to talk about blending it with treated saltwater and wastewater. And we'll do this for one reason, as far as I can tell, so that we can continue using half of our potable water for outdoor irrigation. If we're going to ask all of our customers to drink lower quality, more heavily treated water in order to continue using half of it outdoors, then what's the point of investing heavily in our watershed? On the one hand, we're spending money to maintain and improve the quality and supply of water from the watershed. And on the other hand, we're spending money to find, treat and blend lower quality water into our drinking supply. Over the coming months and as part of the strategic plan, I'd like to ask the board and staff to step back and consider what role our watershed really plays in the district's mission. And we had some of that discussion tonight. It was great to see. Is it there to provide the best quality drinking water for all customers? Or is it also there to be used outdoors for a relatively few customers who want to irrigate their landscapes with it? If it's there to be used mostly outdoors and we're willing to reduce quality to do so, then is it fiscally responsible to invest in the health and productivity of the watershed? I know where I'll be in that discussion and I'd like to know explicitly where staff and the board will be. And a final comment, while it's not part of the discussion so far, I'm also wondering if it would make sense to look at the watershed as a benefit to carbon sequestration and its ability to attract moisture and perhaps encourage precipitation. I know we don't have an Amazon rainforest in our midst, but it's not an insignificant ecosystem either. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Boss, please.
Good evening, directors. Thank you for this presentation. First of all, I wanted to call out that Director Russell correctly called out that William Kent framed the creation of the water district back in 1912 as both a water supply and a magnificent park for the public. He really wanted to protect these lands and recreation actually predates the the creation of the water district. The railroad, of course, was built in the late 1800s and took recreation hikers and visitors up to the top of Mount Tam to a tavern. We had the West Point Inn was built in 1904, the Dipsy Race, 1905, these things existed. Recreation on the on the watershed existed before it became what it is today. So that's why we have a legacy of recreation. And a lot of the popular hiking trails on the mountain, again, were built before the creation of the water district. So I just think it's important to remember that we've we've changed the the thinking and and the mission, but but that's why recreation is such an important part of this conversation. And as Director Schmidt mentioned, we have over a million visitors. So we can't really ignore the the fact that it's a it's a destination. And also I hear sometimes people mentioning East Bay Mud and other places where they don't allow visitors, East Bay Mud, to the best of my knowledge, those lands did not have preexisting recreation on them when they formed that water district. And that's why that that it's it's managed differently. But that said, I just wanted to call out, I think I I support a lot of the the goals here, I think they're good, especially the stewardship. And I just have a few suggestions for the recreation goals. As Director Sampson mentioned, I would I would get hiking out, just just call trails and roads. We don't need to identify potential uses. But we might actually want to identify all uses, which would include walking, hiking, running, horseback riding, photography, fishing, if we're, you know, maybe we do want to list some of those different activities that are allowed on the watershed. The the watershed is also a through point for so many other surrounding parks. So we need to, I think it's good to call that out that we need to be collaborative with our different agencies and acknowledge that people need to travel through the watershed. And then I think it might be good to add a point about harmony among trail users. Might be a good objective in the next five years, try and find common ground among all the all the folks that visit and use the watershed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Vernon Huffman, and then we'll have Susan and Nate McKidrick. Go ahead, Mr. Huffman.
Yes, thank you, directors, for your very insightful presentation tonight. Regarding Objective Four, I do appreciate the timing and how you've scheduled this. Given that you will soon be addressing the Recreation Management Plan and the starting to look at the some recommendations from your private contractor. I think that this is a good time we discuss this in in your strategic plan. We know that recreation numbers are up. And they will continue to increase just simply to the fact that population growth. We believe that adaptive management is more important than ever. And adaptive management can can, you know, help to solve some of these problems. And like Tom Boss has just said, cooperation amongst user groups can be helped with adaptive management. And regarding Objective Three, stewardship. You know, I represent a user group, Access for Bikes, where there's about 3,000 of us that are ready to help. And if if we could explore better trail sharing on the mountain, we have the know how and the we have talented people within our organization that can help it not be a budgetary expense to the water district. And so we can take some of that expense and we can provide care to the trails and make them perform better. We can make them perform better in terms of how they handle water. And we believe in clean water as well. And maintaining your trails is one way to ensure that you have clean water. I just want to also mention that the old board very recently ignored recreation in in regards to its changing demographic. They ignored it for so long that some of those board members aren't here now. So I wanted to, and a good example of that is how the e-bike issue was handled when the board, when the staff provided some recommendations. And the old board kicked the can down the road. And I believe that the voting public noticed that. And I do appreciate those members of the board now that want to address its most invested user groups. And all while ensuring clean water supply. Thank you very much again.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Next, we have Susan. Susan, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Susan. I'm Marin resident. And I want to thank board for taking the time to review the strategic objectives for the go to the watershed and the watershed users. I just want to encourage you all to remember that all users in the watershed care deeply about the watershed. I mean, I know we have a lot of visitors from out of town, but you know, the majority of us in Marin care about how we treat it and also how we treat other users in the watershed. And I want to encourage solution based collaboration to provide like great outdoor experiences while minimizing harmful effects on water quality. We really need to tap visitors as a resource for stewardship. There's a really young, new generation that's energetic and they are the high school mountain bike teams. And the newer generations in Marin are excited about being outside. And if we constantly just ignore their ability to access or their desire to access the watershed through more than just hiking and with bikes, you're going to lose an entire generation of supporters. You're losing an entire generation of great pairs and entire generation of people that would be great stewards for the watershed and also a lot of sweat equity and capital for volunteer days. I know a lot of the high school teams have a volunteer requirements. And kind of randomly and finally, I kind of agree with Larry that we should charge some money for parking and using the watershed. I mean, I ride my bike in Chinatown Camp. I don't drive there, but I have a membership. It's 35 bucks, really cheap. Way cheaper than a gym membership. And, you know, I, it helps fund the friends of Chinatown Camp. And I hike there too. So, you know, as a hiker and somebody who cycles, I feel good about having that that membership. It's really inexpensive. And I think that if you're going to drive and park, you should be paying for the privilege to park at the watershed, you know, unless you have a disability and have a placard. But we really need to discourage people from using fossil fuels to beginning to record outdoor activities. To kind of reiterate what the first commenter said, the watershed has a lot of trees, has a lot of carbon sequestration, but it's constantly battling the amount of carbon we're putting out into the earth by trying to drive to the watershed to be one of nature. It's very ironic. And second, and lastly, if you're thinking about building a visitor center at Sky Oaks, just remember there's a lot of traffic on Sky Oaks and the drivers are sometimes very dangerous. As somebody who has ridden my bike up Sky Oaks, I can tell you that it's really, really unsafe. The number of people that go up there and you do need some sort of traffic management plan for the roads accessing the watershed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the comment. I have several more people to go through. Next is Nate McKidrick, Ted Felhuber, Larry Minnichus, and Bill Keen. Go ahead, Nate.
Good evening. My name is Nate McKidrick. My kids, Erin, Kate, and Finn. My wife, Jen and I are locals and we hike and bike on the watershed. I'm surprised that after all the constructive public comment and participation for what God has been over a year, two years, I'm losing track. In regularly noticed meetings that biking isn't mentioned in Objective Four at all. Yet this document given to you by staff has the granularity to talk about expanded nature based self guided tours. Something that was nowhere near as important to the public is fair, environmentally friendly access to the watershed. And this document talks about improvements to hiking trails, but not biking trails. We all know what these code word means, these code words mean. Marinites have seen this movie before and, you know, we panned it in recent elections. I was a planning commissioner for 12 years and had over 200 public hearings as part of that. Goal and objective documents like this have real meaning. They're authority to staff and give staff directions, and they also give direction to future meetings of a legislative body. So this process in correcting this document is important. And I'm glad that it's getting attention. I would like the board to give a consensus direction or majority vote if need be to staff to make certain changes to Objective Four stewardship. I've sent you all an email with the language that I'm recommending. The first is to add a bullet that says, quote, expand efforts for appropriate sharing of trail resources between different types of local users. The second change is to add a bullet that says, quote, appropriate enhancement of trail systems for all types of local users. The third change that I would like staff to be directed to make is to add the words and biking after the word hiking in the last bullet before the word trails. Again, I've emailed this language to all of you for reference. I've really appreciated the process that staff has put together over the last couple of years and I'm hoping that it moves forward in a constructive manner that involve continues to involve the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Felhuber.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for doing all this great planning and research and work. You know, I've lived in Marin for 25 years. I am a member of the San Somo BPAC and I am one of the administrators of Tamarancho. To be fully disclosed here. I grew up on the peninsula. My backyard was a San Francisco watershed and we had the Camp Sawyer Road, and I'm so glad you did not go that way. Which was putting up like a, you know, 10 mile fence on both sides of the road. And I don't think we need that in Marin. I think we have a great tradition of letting people use the watershed. We can't hunt or camp anymore, but we used to be able to do that. You know, we'd like to hike and bike and ride our horses. And I would encourage you to finish the trail and road master plan. And I would suggest you strongly look at what the Tahoe National Forest is doing in terms of multi use things. This is all addressing the item for recreation issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Minnichus, please.
Well, good evening, folks. I had totally planned to be there this evening until someone, my family had borrowed my truck for a little pickup and didn't check the gas gauge. So I've been running around. So unfortunately, I'm not there. But I I'd just like to say in brief that, you know, I'm very pleased with the strategic, the strategic goals and objectives and the direction that the process is going. It's a long time coming. You know, this is a great moment in the history of this district and looking towards its future development to really take this inner look and to update the strategic plan in this very open and public process. And it is a process and it will continue to get fine tuned. I don't feel there's really a need to hit specifics this evening, but just to say that it's it's really good where we're headed here. Thank you so much. Good evening.
Thank you. The next three, Bill Keen, Andrew Levine, and Jan Heinemann. Go ahead, Mr. Keen.
Yes, I hope everybody can hear me. My name is Bill Keen. I used to serve as the general manager of the Sonoma Open Space District for nearly 15 years and prior to that worked in at Sonoma Water for 10. So I understand the work that you do. And I very much appreciate all that you're doing to improve our water supply system and manage for recreation that you're talking about tonight and manage the watershed in a really holistic way. So hats off to you. I really think what you're doing is the right thing, specifically on this particular goal, the watershed goal. I think echoing what others have said, the idea of equity in our watershed for our recreational users is a long time coming. And I'm pleased to be seeing the work you're doing with the rec management plan and bringing all the users together. I think if the environmental community, the recreation community all work together, we can find solutions that meet the needs of all users and continue to protect the environment that we really, really care about and ensure our safe and safeguard our water supply. I would, I would say, I agree with a couple of the speakers who said, remove the word hiking before trails in in the bullet that's in Objective Four. I think that presumes that only hiking trails exist on the mountain. And I think we've got other users there, equestrians, runners, bikers, and we need to to maybe just have the word trails in there. Again, thank you for doing this. I look forward to seeing the rec management plan come out in the next month or so and and see what your board does to really help meet the needs of our users and safeguard our water supply. Thanks and keep up the great work.
Thank you. Mr. Andrew Levine, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Andrew Levine. I live in Mill Valley. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. First of all, I want to agree with the previous commenters who basically said that the goals shouldn't dance around bikes. We have to mention bikes in there and because words last, written words last, spoken words, things, assumptions that we all think, oh, yeah, we know what we're talking about. No, we need to put in the words that bikes are users, important users in this plan. That's the first thing I wanted to say. The second one was these comments about making people pay for watershed access is, I I think it's unfair because paying for access to the watershed is not equal access to the watershed. Of course, you know, all the wealthy folks with property against the watershed, not a problem for us to walk up and pay a dollar to go in. But this, this, this resource belongs to all of us and having a gatekeeping fee leads to exclusion and part of many of the good discussions we had around this plan over the past two years have been increasing inclusion and nickel and diming people to come visit the watershed is not the way to do that. So but I do appreciate the process and I I see we're making progress and I appreciate everyone's efforts on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Janet Heinemann, please.
Yeah, it's actually Jan Heinemann. Thank you. Appreciate the time to support. uh, support, um, my view that is really what Nate and other bikers have supported as well. A most lifelong biker, been biking for 40-plus years in, in Marin, living in Marin for over a decade and think it's very important that we include that community, uh, in, specifically into the plan, the way that the others have said. Um, so, uh, them and, you know, other user groups that I think everyone agrees are, uh, supportive of the goals for the water. It can explicitly be included in there because we all very much support the nature and the wildlife and the water preservation. And that, they are a common goal. And, uh, being more inclusive by including the bikers explicitly and the other friendly, equally friendly nature groups and uses is, is just the inclusive and, and will gain more support for all the hard work that you guys are doing. So that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we do have one more speaker, um, Eric's iPad. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is very, this is very gross. Um, I, I'm a little concerned about, um, a situation where the board is finding itself with the situation of divided loyalties. Obviously, there have been speakers, uh, speaking here strongly about the use of the facility of the watershed as a recreational area. And then we've also had conversations about the use of the watershed as a water source. Your ratepayers are paying for water. They're not paying for recreation. I think you need to figure out some way to fund the recreation that's independent of the ratepayers. This needs to be discussed in more detail, not just sort of hoping, hoping that they'll all work its way out. So that'll be my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have Matthew Marado, please. Go ahead, Matthew.
Hello, um, I just had one comment to say specifically on the role of recreation in protecting the watershed itself and that I think we should be considering recreation an important part of sustainability and that it invests people and connects them with nature. If it weren't for that, um, perhaps the next generation of recreationalists and users, along with many cyclists, hikers, and equestrians like, would not be as invested in this, the safety or the, uh, environmental security of the watershed. So I feel like that's an important factor consi- to consider and that recreation isn't something that exclusively, um, has no impact or damages the watershed, but actually does have positive impacts as well.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay. Great discussion. Um, all right, with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is upcoming meetings.
Oh, we just have our next board meeting, which is on December 5th, and that's it.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.